Hi.
Hi.
I'm here.
Hi.
I learned how to take care of your family. So basically, we're the generation of famine. People, bodies, because it was so long. It's what I'm trying to explain to you from that. But that, and we've been struggling with that for a long time. They, well, they have to be there to be that. They will not go down in the rain. But the damage is, and I'll just go, that their bodies are still standing on that.
You never know.
Even though they're not the inheritors, it can be like, I think, three or five years. I mean, it's not, like, how do you even get pyroclastic as a recipient?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're, uh...
Even though all the children, the family, you can't keep them all back.
No, I learned this by, the, 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 and you don't eat, it accelerates your body. So you have to try to act out of, like, excessive exercise or whatever. Like, I probably have some sort of, you know, disorder. I don't eat that bad.
Yeah.
I'm sure this one's very, very, like, uh, uh, cool. Well, cool.
I know.
I haven't talked to you in a while.
I know.
But, like, you forget, like, all these things, but, um, yeah, this is cool.
I have, what do you call it? I have, uh, minimum fifteen dollars, am I right?
Yeah.
What, what's yours?
No, that's great, no. So when did you become sixteen?
I was sixteen.
Oh.
I gave it up at one and a half, and then I would give it to my mom after.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what kind of...
Uh, Bush.
First book?
Second.
Second book.
Yeah.
And you got her to call her Obama.
Because Obama was the first president.
Oh, but that, you could vote for it.
Yeah, but it was voting for Obama.
That's all right, I, I...
I, I, I'm a Republican.
Wait, who?
He ran against, the first one was, uh, Johnson.
Wait, his first presidency?
It was Johnson, he, second one was Obama.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so Obama, there was a story. There's a time, and I, I still tell you, it was December, he, uh, you know, September.
I forgot, she was running, like, back then.
He was so old. Yeah, and, uh, because I was going to go, and then I just, and that, great, I was, uh, and then I got off.
So they were...
Obama. And then I, uh, met, uh, Obama.
Yeah.
How are you?
Hey!
Uh, yeah, so her first election was, uh, under Obama.
It was under Obama.
It was against...
Obama, mommy.
And Obama was going, unless she was...
Obama's second term, or second election, it was Trump. I'm sorry.
She might always want him to turn on her.
Oh, then it would have been Trump's third.
Right. Yeah, and she was a part of it.
I think she, I think she laid down her back, she didn't want Hillary in, and she didn't want Trump in, so, yeah, I think she liked it. I mean, California, I don't think it was Trump in. It don't matter. But all in our, it was Obama.
Yeah. Right? Yeah. Great.
I know.
Wow.
A lot of fun.
Yeah. So now I was, I'm glad, I'm glad she did it. So next year she's going to vote for Obama.
Hey, how are you?
How are you? I, I guess you...
You're just you?
Well, you were, well, you were...
I was, I was very, I was very, very good. I'm kind of boring people.
So, uh, uh, my experience, I mean, it's, we were, we were, we were...
Yeah, right, we're really, you know, the power.
Yeah.
I mean, some of it actually, like, you know, it's...
What does it mean? You don't want to be, like, everything here, because that's...
Just for example, I don't know about that.
I don't know very much about...
But in this country, absolutely. All right, cool. Well, not the main, so, you know, like, we'll see.
Okay.
I'll put the music back on.
Yeah.
Thank you. We love this.
Yeah.
We'll make sure to save it in my meeting. Should we do this part? Hmm. Hey. So, I, I had to realize that she's... So, how are you, sir? Good, how are you? Good. I was gonna say, thank you for talking to me.
Check one, two, check, check. Check one, two, check, one, two.
Been like three weeks.
Check one, two, check, test.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to our August twenty-seventh planning commission meeting. Um, I will call this meeting to order at six o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Commissioner Knighton?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas? Looks like he is running late. Uh, Vice Chair Haller?
Here.
And Chair Madrid?
Here.
Officer, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
He's looking for backup.
What's your name, officer?
Officer Downing, our new...
Thank, thank you, Officer Downing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to, uh, four point one, a brief history of and, and introduction to planning. Could I please ask the Community Development Director Orlando Hernandez to introduce tonight's presentation?
Chair, thank you. Um, as we discussed last meeting, we were going to, uh, uh, do a couple of training sessions for the commission, so this is the first one. And I think I know now why, uh, Commissioner Thomas is running late, but, uh, I will discuss this with him. So with that, I'll have, uh, Senior Planner Fernando, um, do the presentation for us, so...
Thank you, Fernando. Thank you. Um, so if we could have the presentation up on screen? Thank you. Uh, so, uh, as mentioned, uh, the presentation before us is going to be for an introduction, uh, of history and planning. Um, this is going to be a very brief history of urban planning, as each of these slides alone can be an entire presentation. Uh, so let's get to it. Um, oh, and also, if you have any questions, please save those for the end. Um, and if you have any questions in the future, please let me know. Uh, so before I begin, I do want to start with this quote. Uh, "The cities will be part of the country. I shall live thirty miles from my office in one direction, under a pine tree. My secretary will live thirty miles away from it, too, in the other direction, under another pine tree. We shall both have our own car. We shall use up tires, wear out the road surfaces and gears, consume oil and gasoline, all of which will necessitate a great deal of work, enough for all." This was, uh, from Le Corbusier, The Radiant City, in nineteen thirty-two. So, cities, they attract people. Um, we are social creatures by nature. Cities take various forms, so they range from large cities, small cities, historic cities, different kinds of cities. And we're all attracted to these, but all of these are planned, and they have different designs through how they're planned. But all of these are planned, and they have different designs through how they're planned. These aren't mere coincidences of how this happens and why this happens. So we actually take part in the form of cities and why they are the way they are through planning. So a lot of these places are very attractive in different ways, in different forms, in different shapes. So why did cities come about? So cities began actually towards the beginning of the last age, last Ice Age, about 12,000 years ago. They were formed for various reasons, most notably because of resource availability, strategic location, and social-political factors once civilizations began to be created. So a lot of cities, actually, what's very interesting and a lot of people don't know, is that they're founded on swamps, a lot of today's major cities. So Paris, London, New York, Mexico City, all on swamp land. This is because it provides a lot of fertile resources, and they're easily defendable. Once cities and empires begin to rise, different factors such as social and political factors cause different cities to form, and some cities form around certain materials, so like gold rush cities. Here we see a map of where some of the ancient cities first arose in different parts of the world, and different timelines. One of the things that I do want you to note is the vast difference in timeline between all of these ancient civilizations. And something that I found very interesting in reading and looking up all of these civilizations is that a lot of these places actually lived just like we do today, with the exception of the advances of modern medicine, electricity, and computers. They had very similar lives, very similar struggles, very similar thoughts. And this was almost 10,000 years ago, starting. So during this time in history, you're going to see that there's going to be a lot of ups and downs, and a lot of repeated issues, and a lot of repeated patterns that humanity is going to repeat. So the age of ancient cities comes to an end at around 100 BCE with the fall of Rome and Teotihuacan. They became overcrowded. So in a lot of the ancient texts that we read, again, a lot of those similar patterns. The cities grew very fast, and people would say they're becoming overcrowded. With the fall of Rome, they had to deal with the constant invasions from the north. They began to decline mostly because of the same factors that we see in the modern world: environmental issues, social-political factors, weakened civic institutions. And so they, all of these ancient civilizations collapsed. Once these civilizations collapsed, it brings us to the Middle Ages and the Renaissance, so oftentimes called the Dark Ages in Europe. So a lot of these cities that had been once prominent centers of culture and education entered into decline. A lot of people went out to the countryside in Europe. Sanitation was not great. During this time, the Black Death took over, which I'm sure you guys know wiped out a vast amount of the population. But all not was lost throughout the world. So in the East, the Silk Road flourished, the Mongols conquested most of Eurasia. In the Byzantine Empire, it was actually Constantinople, which is modern-day Istanbul, became the capital for the Byzantine Empire for over 1,000 years. So that's four times longer than the United States has been a country. Mesoamerica and Tenochtitlan and Cusco served as the centers for their respective empires. The Mayan Empire peaked between 250 to 900 AD. Their advances in astronomy and engineering were not going to be matched until the 1800s by our civilization. And then also, I did want to briefly note that what's going to become the future US, there is also cities flourishing within our continent. It's just that we don't touch on this a lot in textbooks. So the Mississippian culture existed from 800 to 1600 CE, and then the Peupé culture from 500 to 1300. But there was a 300-year drought. So if you all can remember, a few years ago, California went through a six-year drought, and how strained we were. If you can imagine that, but take that six-year gap, over 300 years, you can see why some of these civilizations and cultures collapsed. So by the time the New World was actually discovered, they had already collapsed. But they were, there's ruins to, you know, see this. The Renaissance actually begins to form in the 15th to 17th centuries. So cities become again the centers of learning and education, primarily starting in Italy with Florence, Venice, Milan, Rome. They became prominent, they spread throughout Europe, Northern Europe. Spain and Portugal send expeditions to the New World, and they discover. The age of discovery and exploration begins. So here we see a brief history of the discovery of the New World. So Hispaniola is the first settlement in the Dominican Republic. King Fernandad in 1513 creates the first set of rules for new cities in the New World. In 1521, Tenochtitlan falls. The first Portuguese settlement, which has a city council, is actually founded in Sao Vicente, Brazil. And then the first set of rules, the ordinance concerning the discovery, settlements, and pacification of the Indies is issued by King Philip in 1573. So how many of you have been to Latin America? All of you? Okay, so most of you. So as I'm sure you have all seen, Latin American cities have a very familiar pattern with the central plaza. There's usually a cathedral. This comes from that rule. So it goes to show that 500 years later, it's still in effect, and it still works. If planning is done right, and it hits the nail on the head, 500 years later, they're still doing the same thing, because again, they got it right the first time. So that comes from that. In 1607, James Stones is founded. This kind of shows where the world is at that time. Eventually, settlements become unrested, and they begin to seek for independence. So enter us, the US enters chat. In 1682, William Penn does a plan for Philadelphia. Savannah in 1733, one of the pictures that you saw earlier, is America's first planned city. In 1776, the United States begins to declare independence. And in 1791, Pierre-Laurent is actually commissioned to prepare a plan for the capital of the United States, also in swamp land. In 1811, the commissioner's plan to establish the city grid of New York City occurs. So we're laying the groundwork and foundations for the United States. Something at this time begins to happen in England. So as you see in this map, it's actually the Industrial Revolution. And you'll see that in different places in the world, it actually spreads at different times, whether for benefit or for fallback. This will depend on the actions of the actors and the regions that it comes to, as we will later see. So the age of industrialization and expansion. The first wave of industrialization focused around the railroads and steam power and textiles. So again, it started in England, and eventually it came to the United States. So cities such as Boston, Providence, New York had set up, been set up for success for this because of the need for their location along a water source. It caused a lot of overcrowding, a lot of pollution, sanitation issues, and the spread of disease. These were common problems. So if you ever look at movies back in the day, and they're glorifying the past at this time, that's not the case. So the cities were filthy, there was a lot of issues, there was a lot of disease, there was a lot of things going on. So cities were not places that you wanted to live in during this time. During this time, also, St. Petersburg is founded, and the French Revolution begins bringing the age of monarchies to an end, and also ushering the wave of independence in other countries. In the United States, because of these issues of the issues within cities, there begins to be a push of expansion out westward. People want to leave, they want land. So in 1785, the United States establishes a land ordinance so that they can begin to survey and sell off western lands. After the Revolutionary War, the Homestead Act is also passed in 1862, which allows any adult citizen or intended citizen who have never borne arms against the US government to claim 160 acres of surveyed public land. Oh, what a time to be alive. In 1818, Robert Owens publishes a report to the Committee of the Association, basically as to how to relieve these overcrowded towns and settlements. So again, the same issues are happening. So the age of reform. So people begin to get tired of all of these issues that are going on in cities. So the sanitation movement begins in the United Kingdom in 1838. Construction of sewer systems and sanitation begins. Most famously, in 1855, London physician John Snow publishes his map of the cholera outbreaks of Soho in Westminster, England. So this basically links the issue. So people, believe it or not, this whole time, people did not know that disease was transmitted through water. So we begin to actually incorporate a lot of this, systems, into our cities. It's famously quoted, somebody saying, one of the people that reformed Paris during this time. "Paris is an immense workshop of putrification, where misery, pestilence, and sickness work in concert, where sunlight and air rarely penetrate. Paris is a terrible place where plants shrivel and perish, and where all seven small infants, four die during the course of the year." In 1848, the Public Health Act included the construction of sewer systems and clean water in Britain. In 1853 and 1870, the reconstruction of Paris happened. And in 1880, Germany became the first nation, or what is to become Germany, to begin education in the technical universities for urban planning. So after us recovering from this first wave of industrialization, a second wave of industrialization hits us. So this focuses on mass production, electrical power, and the assembly line. So there's going to be major implications because of this. In 1880, Pullman begins to, the construction of Pullman, Illinois, which is the first company model town. So he basically constructed a model town for all of the workers in his company, where he basically let them buy their homes. But then he also controlled every aspect of their life, so where they work, where they live, and then all the stores. So it basically became a self-contained ecosystem. In 1890, Jacob Rees publishes On How the Other Half Lives in the New York slums, which shows there, as you can see in that picture, the issues surrounding major cities at the time. So again, because of the overcrowding and overpopulation that arises because of the Second Industrial Revolution, a lot of immigrants are coming over from Europe, they want to advance, they want to move forward. So this leads to a lot of issues of overcrowding and sanitation. So again, similar to what we had seen in the First Industrial Revolution. So these are just some images of life in New York back in the time. So again, very, very overcrowded. As a result, the city efficiency movement begins to arise, which focuses around the industrial nations. And they sought to eliminate waste in all areas of the economy and society. So it was very top-down based, so very expert-based, very professional-based, very mathematical. Here you see the construction on the lower corner of Canberra. And on the lower other corner, the first skyscraper in Chicago is constructed. So as a result, again, now we see the counter movement. People want to go out of the city again, so arise garden cities. So in 1898, Ebenezer Howard publishes tomorrow A Peaceful Path to Reform. And so this launches the city garden movement. So where basically, everybody wants to have a little piece of green. He says that this would be a good solution to a lot of the problems that we're seeing in cities, to get people back out in nature, to introduce the countryside back into the city, a peaceful emergence of these two. So this is actually adopted throughout the world, different cities and different places. A lot of them here in the United States adopt this model. So that actually looks very similar to what we're starting to have modern cities look like, particularly in the United States, Radburn, Merdugy, Forest Hills. They have some of these principles and concepts in mind. Radburn is famous because it's actually the first city that is focused around the automobile. So, and they introduce a cul-de-sac and various different aspects, so with different pedestrian paths. So they begin to remove the pedestrian away from the public realm. So along this time period, the city beautiful movement also happened, so along Chicago. So in 1893, sorry, the Chicago World's Fair happens, the McMillan Plan of 1902 for Washington DC, the Philadelphia Plan for 1907, and the 1900 Plan for Chicago. So the focus and premise around the city beautiful movement was, if we can make our cities beautiful, this will basically encourage citizens and residents to become good themselves, to become better. It's going to inspire residents. Eventually, what happens is that a lot of these plans are not implemented, and the rise and fall of American planning happens. So this is just a brief overview of what happens in the American planning. Zoning under discriminatory legislation in California begins to take hold. The first precursors to planning commissions in Cleveland happens in 1902. So, and in 1907, the first planning commission is formed. In 1909, the Planning Conference in DC happens. And there's a bunch of other topics that we will discuss right now that happen. Euclidean zoning is considered the fall of American planning, primarily because it changed the way that cities were traditionally built, and that its intentions were good. It was to separate industry away from residential and commercial zones, so we wouldn't have the effects that happened in the First Industrial Revolution, the Second Industrial Revolution. But what happened is we took it too far, and that we spread out everything. So eventually, in the future, there comes a point where cities have over 100 zoning designations for every single zone, which then causes our cities to no longer be walkable, to no longer be livable. So that, this decision right here proves detrimental to American cities in the future. We just did not know it at the time. During this time also, New Deal communities are occurring, so people are looking for ways to resettle different areas of the United States, bring up the economy, because we have just gotten out of World War I. So a lot of different communities are founded. Arthur Dale, West Virginia, is one of the more famous ones, trying to restore that agrarian lifestyle and to get people to lift themselves out of poverty. Green Belt cities are a part of this. They are controversial in that they do have restrictive covenants as to who can live in these cities. Most notably, Greendale, Wisconsin, Greenbelt, Maryland, and Green Hills, Ohio. They're founded by the Resettlement Administration in the 1930s. So this will have major implications later on for communities of color, in that they won't have access to resources and to build generational wealth. During this time, there is an exhibit called Future AMA in the New York World's Fair. So we begin to see the foundations of how modern cities are going to be affected. There's actually a plot. And the more you dig into it, the more enraged you should be. So a lot of the companies, particularly like General Motors, they actually issued these types of exhibits that show the city in the future, and what this futuristic city is going to be, to try to sell you an idea that, to try to addict you to a certain way of life, that you need a motor vehicle, that you need a car. So again, this is the 1930s. It hasn't happened yet, but they're already laying the foundation for it. World War II happens. So here we see Cologne, Hiroshima. There's a brief moment in the world, a pause. After the World War II happens, a lot of families return back from the war after having fought. They're looking to establish families, buy homes. A lot of people of color relocate to cities, looking for upward mobility. However, once this happens, then we get white flight from the central cities. People begin to move to the suburbs. Restrictive covenants keep people of color from purchasing homes in a lot of these suburbs, and to keep them out. So then that causes the decline of the inner cities in a lot of American cities. So this is also exacerbated, oh, sorry, exacerbated by the decline of certain American industries, which causes the decline of certain cities, particularly in the Midwest. Cities that we're going to see are not able to adapt and are not able to change to the changes that are occurring globally. There's also the rise in shopping centers and malls located in suburbs. The rise of, so the suburbs, is accredited to Levittown in New York. It's considered the first mass-produced suburban neighborhood founded by Abraham Levitt and his company with Levitt and Sons. And the GI Bill, formerly known as the Service Management Readjustment Act of 1944, helps a lot of families get loans to buy a lot of these homes. So it helps provide that framework, that mobility, for a lot of these families who previously didn't have access to this. So a lot of people begin to move to the suburbs and leave the cities. Consequently, enter General Motors again, and a few other companies. So this is one of the things that you should be enraged. So actually, so America is notorious for not having a good public transit network. That is actually a lie. We used to have a very good public transit network. It's just that during this time, in the early 20th century, a lot of corporations actually colluded, bought up a lot of these public transit networks, particularly in Los Angeles. There you see the map of the famous railcar system that used to extend all of Southern California. It went all the way from Los Angeles to Riverside, to Santa Ana, to Long Beach, to Santa Monica. It connected all of Southern California. And these rail networks and trolley systems were actually bought and set up to fail on purpose so that you can then purchase their products. At the same time, we now have the push for the Federal Highway Act of 1956, in the guise to, should there ever be another war, we can easily mobilize the military, provide easy access to all of our cities throughout the nation. But it actually helps, a lot of people need to purchase vehicles and to spread suburbia. And so this was 41,000 miles of interstate highway that were built during this time. The effect? We see that cities go from small, compact, you need to walk everywhere, and then with the introduction of streetcars, to sizably, you know, you, most cities will be within the orange and the yellow circle, to now, we are within the green circle, and even worse, the blue circle. So cities now have no boundary, they can expand nonstop. So cities now have no boundary. They can expand non-stop. And the result is what we see to the right. And this, in the future, will lead to the creation of edge cities. So there we see Ontario, California. Um, so edge cities are basically on the fringes of major cities. So they feature extensive shopping malls, restaurants, entertainment venues, catering to the needs of both residents and workers. And this was popularized in nineteen ninety-one. So they're not true cities that were founded back when cities originally founded. They arise as, as a result of suburbia and sprawl. During this time, we also have two conflicting interests. So commercial development is fighting each other. So the shopping malls and the pedestrian malls in downtown. So the shopping malls is founded in nineteen fifty-six, the first one in Southdale Center in Minnesota. It basically seeks to create a downtown within an enclosed space that's gonna be air-conditioned, safe, it's gonna be inviting. But what that does is that it actually kills a lot of the downtowns in America. And so what happens is a lot of these cities with declining downtowns seek different ways to try to bring them back to life. So they introduced the concept of pedestrian malls that they had seen that worked in Germany very well. So in the nineteen fifties, they began to take out their main streets and then create these walkable centers, which actually functioned for a few years. But because they didn't understand completely the psychology of humans and how they operate, a lot of these failed. And so by the end of the twentieth century, a lot of these were actually ripped out and restored back into uh, streets. However, the ones that were successful and that were successfully implemented to this day remain in operation, one of which is in downtown Riverside. And so that was because of the constant reinvestment, the constant upkeep with the community support and the acknowledgement that this is something that's valuable to us and that we need to keep on putting our time into it. So again, the concept and the theme of times are changing, things change. If we don't adapt to it, we will fail. Walmart, Blockbuster kill most of these, even the shopping malls and the pedestrian malls. But again, times are changing. So then they get taken out by Amazon, Redbox. And then they get taken out by Timu and Netflix. So again, companies that are not adjusting, cities that are not adjusting, people that do not adjust. If you don't adapt, if you don't basically change, uh, it's not the strongest of the species that survive, nor the most intelligent, but the ones that are most adaptable to change. So this theme is also prevalent and present within cities because cities can be thought of as organisms. Urban renewal. So this started in the nineteen forties. So uh, there was very well-intentioned efforts during this time for us to reinvigorate, bring back life to cities. So what happens is that a lot of slum clearance happened, but this unfortunately happened in a lot of communities of color. So that wiped a lot of uh, housing that provided previously a lot of foot traffic to a lot of these commercial cores. So that further exacerbated a lot of the urban centers into decline even more. So here we see a few of the cities of what they looked like in the nineteen fifties and what they look like today. So they actually bulldozed a lot of the communities to build highways, to build parking lots, so that people who live in the suburbs can drive into downtown and then drive out of downtown. But what does that do combined with Euclidian zoning? It creates these dead spaces when once the eight-to-five, nine-to-five workday ends, there's nobody there. There's no mix of uses, there's no restaurants, there's nobody living, there's no people walking, their dogs, their pets, uh, running errands. So the American cities begin to enter into decline. Public housing is also introduced during this time as well-intentioned efforts, uh, most notably Pruitt-Igoe in St. Louis. Uh, however, uh, they followed some concepts of the beauty, city beautiful movements in that they decorated a lot of these apartments with very lavish, very extravagant finishes on the inside, thinking that that was gonna be enough to motivate people, not providing services to go along with the housing, uh, like childcare that we know today is necessary, public transportation as to how these people are gonna get to work. So eventually, these actually enter into decline. And there's a lot of crime, there's a lot of issues with them. And then by the nineteen seventies, they're demolished because of the lack of understanding as to how to implement this. Very good intentions, but they didn't know at the time that in addition to providing the service, the, the house, you need to also provide services. Does this look appealing to you? Yeah, yeah, I would, yeah, I would say so. Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is, this is the, this, this is what is being sold uh, to America during this time. So you want to own your own car, you want to have your house with the lawn, with the ability to drive everywhere, you know, the nostalgia of the drive-in with the diner and all of that. Very, very appealing, right? What they do not mention is the reality of what caught the suburbs, the effects of the suburbs. How many of you have been stuck in traffic for at least an hour in the past week? A few of you, right? Yeah. Exactly. So as a result, so everything in planning has a positive effect and a negative effect. In planning though, you need to choose which ones you're going to take. Suburban sprawl leads to this. It doesn't matter if you add another lane, the traffic is gonna come and it's gonna fill it up. They always say, oh, we have so much traffic in the road. It has been proven time and time and again. If you add another lane, people are gonna take up that lane and traffic is gonna be restored back to the levels that it was within a year or two years. The other result is leapfrog development and mass-spread suburban development. So this. Right? So it's interesting. We see this kind of development in the United States. But the same society that has this kind of development is actually leading us to the third industrial revolution. So the area, uh, the era of automated production, electronics and computer. The same civilization that is now sending man to the moon and launching satellites into space. So we seem to be advancing and doing stuff very, very well. We are a very intelligent species. But why is it that our cities are starting to look like this? And so we're starting to see the history of it, right? So new cities enter into prominence. Tokyo, Shanghai, San Francisco. A lot of these cities and nations that are categorized by the digital technology, renewable energy, solar and wind power begin to enter and take key aspects. The cities that are not able to adapt, such as Detroit, Baltimore, Buffalo, cities in Northern England and the Rhine Valley in Germany, begin to collapse and fall. So here we see pictures of what they look like in nineteen oh-six and uh, two thousand fifteen, and some images of Detroit, uh, what it looks like today. Robert and Moses and Jane Jacobs, those of you familiar with planning. This is a famous David and Goliath battle. And so Robert Moses represents top-down interest, Jane Jacobs bottom-up. Uh, so Jane Jacobs, actually, Robert Moses, uh, he's infamous in New York. He developed a lot of the public infrastructure and road resystems. He wanted to propose a highway through Jane Jacobs' Greenwich Village. She actually fought him and uh, basically said, no, there's a lot of community here, there's a lot of good aspects. And at the time, they did not take her seriously. They did not say, you, what do you know? You're just a member of the community. I, Robert Moses, am the expert. But what plan, what happens during this time, during planning, is that there begins to become a paradigm shift in that they know that there is knowledge of community members. And eventually, she is proven right in all of her points. They begin to see that these communities that have the mix of uses, that are walkable, that have all these integrated systems are actually very, very beneficial. And so she wins. During this time, the age of environmentalism also happens. Uh, so as the Coo Hanga River catches fire in Cleveland, not the first time, but the most prevalent time in nineteen sixty-nine, a river catching fire. That is insane. From nineteen forty-two to nineteen fifty-three, a canal was dug called Love Canal. Some of you, this happened in nineteen seventy-eight. I don't know, some of you might be familiar with this. Um, but that led to the Superfund Program being created because somebody decided to build a suburban community on top of a landfill. So now we're learning from the mistakes. So again, the same patterns, the same issues that happened previously are being repeated. So in the nineteen seventies, NEPA has created the National Environmental Protection uh, Act and as well as a Federal Water Pollution Control Act amongst many, 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 many other acts and legislation that happened to protect, to clean up our cities and to have it basically what we have today. Explosive growth happens throughout the world during this time. So a lot of cities, a lot of slums are created. Again, the same issues that happened in the first and second industrial revolution now in other cities because of the mass migration, because of the attraction, because of the appeal of living in cities, the upward mobility that is provided by cities. People are literally willing to risk everything to have that chance to move to these cities. Different governments respond in different ways. In Beijing, they knock them down, the, the Hutans uh, to build today, modern luxury living. Other places such as Latin America try to incorporate these into the urban fabric and are trying to formalize them. So such as in Brazil, the favelas are being, uh, now there's programs, or in Colombia, there's programs to try to incorporate a lot of these communities into the urban fabric. Now. This, is this appealing to you? Does this look inviting? Yeah? What about this? No, right? What about that? Can you tell me where that is? No? Would you walk here? Exactly. So if we're answering no to all of this, then why are we still building this? When we could be building places like this? So now we're entering the age of modern planning. So we're learning our lessons, finally, after a couple, it took us about a hundred years, but we're, we're learning our lessons. Uh, so yeah, this is in the United States. A lot of cities are starting to recognize that there's a lot of capital. It, it doesn't have to just be economic capital, it could be social capital, it could be cultural capital, uh, that we can have the foundations in our cities. We, if we don't have it, we can create it, we can build it. Uh, the main streets in America, they exist. People are starting to reinvest in them. They're starting to build walkable spaces with cafes that people like to go out, that are landscape, that, you know, it looks like you wanna sit there and have a coffee or order some kind of delicious food that you've never tried before. Yeah? Maybe? Yeah? Or how about going to a public market and getting some kind of unique things, maybe some uh, different type of soap, some, you know, handcrafted chocolates, you know? Appealing. And so new urbanism and smart growth begins to take shape. So basically reintroducing a lot of the concept of older cities into our cities and learning that there is actually value in the ways that things have been done before. So hence, new urbanism. And smart growth focusing on creating vibrant mixed-use development and conserving the resources we have and maximizing the resources we have. So it's a new way of thinking of, let's look at what is really out there and let's maximize it. Because land and everything's a limited resource. And we don't wanna create the same mistakes. And I promise I will not say the name. So enter the new urbanists. And so Kentlands, when it was first made, a lot of banks said, this is not gonna work. So there, it was, this was a very controversial community and development. Because particularly, you're gonna integrate different types of housing and different income classes in one development? Nobody's gonna wanna buy that. But guess what happened? It sold out. Because people wanted that. They wanted the ability to be able to walk, to do their errands, down the street, down a block, to be able to have access to parks, to resources, to schools, to housing, to everything, to open space. Same with Seaside, Florida. So this was another little town that was created. The people that originally bought into the concept made a very good investment because last time I checked, houses here were well over two million dollars now. So if you create a product that is actually good, people will buy it. Because as we have seen, in America, there is now a short supply of this. So new urbanism, smart growth. Does that look appealing? Yeah? So a lot of us were told that because America is the way it is because we were developed around the cart. But that's not the case at all. See, Canada right here, this is in Toronto, and Australia, well, that's Calgary, but in Australia, as well as other countries like New Zealand, were also primarily founded during times of the automobile. Yet they continue to invest in their urban centers, their downtowns, continue to provide a framework, a framework of growth that basically preserved a lot of their cities. And so it's not an impossibility. We are now in the age of the fourth industrial revolution, which is happening now. Artificial intelligence, ooh. Big data, robotics, and more to come. So this, this is interesting because we are now at an age where people can choose to live anywhere. And for a time during COVID, people were starting to move to the suburbs. But now that COVID has receded, we are now seeing that people are starting to move back to city centers. So why is that? It's because of the attraction that these places provide, the life, the opportunity, the resources. The concept of the fifteen-minute city has also arisen during this time. So again, kind of like what Kentlands and Seaside had, the ability for you to be able to walk, to run errands, to do everything within a fifteen-minute commute or walk from where you live. Wouldn't that be great if you were to, within fifteen minutes, be able to walk to your house? If you wanted to, or even in a shorter distance, be able to bike to your house, to run, like, to have any type of errand from here to your house be done? Like, let's say you needed to pick up something to eat. In that time, you would be able to do it. You'd be able to do all your errands. So that's what that concept is. Is to basically have an inviting, safe, well-designed environment for us to have access to everything. And as the world's richest country in the history of time, I don't think that's too much to ask, right? We live in the world's wealthiest economy, but yet we're unable to do this. But other people are doing it. So there is now a movement to try to do this. So that's in Copenhagen. We're also entering into the era of mega projects. So a lot of cities, a lot of people are seeing themselves and they're doing, they're going the next mile, the mile forward to be number one, to provide that quality of life for their residents, for their citizens, because they want to be number one, and they know they can be number one. So there we see developments in the United Arab Emirates. There we see Seoul, which is an entirely new city created uh, for, uh, sorry, that's a, a different city in South Korea, which is created for the new fourth industrial revolution, which focuses on digital technology. Uh, Mexico City is down in the corner below. Cairo is creating an entirely new capital, which is shown there on the other corner. New cities are being brought forward as leaders. So the Bay Area Silicon Valley, focusing on tech such as Google and Apple. Shenzhen, China is starting to arise as a major contender to Silicon Valley. So there is seventeen point nine billion people, five hundred and seven billion GDP with a five-to-six percent growth rate. If they keep that up, they will, they will outpace a lot of the urban regions and cities and eventually the Bay Area. Seoul, South Korea, twenty-six million people, one trillion GDP. So a lot of these cities, fifty years ago, were small fishing villages, small rural towns. Now they are major global developers, contenders, because they are adopting, they are choosing to move forward, invest in the right areas. Singapore is a major example of this. There is now five point eight million people in the small, what used to be the small fishing village. Seven hundred and fifty-six billion-dollar GDP. Major headquarters are located here. Shanghai, China. Seven hundred and four, seven hundred forty-one billion GDP at also a five percent growth. Thirty-nine percent of the population is long-term migrants from other parts of China. So that's a theme that you're seeing in a lot of these cities, that once you become successful, you begin to attract a lot of people that want to come and live there, work there, invest there, build their lives there. Same with Dubai. Two hundred and two point eight billion GDP at four point, at four percent growth. Only eleven percent of its population was native Emiratis. At a more local scale, more seeable towards Menifee, we have Riley Durham, which only has two point one million people. But it has a hundred and eighty-three point six billion uh, economy. And it is the home of major, of three major research institutions. So the University of Northern, of North Carolina, State University, Duke University, and the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And it is part of North Carolina's Research Triangle. So basically, they are focusing a lot on these new sectors that are coming in the fourth industrial revolution. They're setting thems, themselves up for success. I didn't even know that Karatou, Kar, Karanuga, Chattanooga, thank you, existed until I started looking. I didn't even know that Chattanooga, Chattanooga, thank you, existed until I started looking into this. And 580,000 people, 40 billion USD. But what makes them stand out is that they have a fiber optic grid in their city. And it is one of the nation's strongest incubators for small businesses, such as 3D printing, healthcare, smart grid technologies. Volkswagen announced plans in 2019 to create an electric vehicles facility there because of the investment that this community has in these new up-and-coming resources. Yay, us, southwestern Riverside County. So 550,000 people, we have approximately 230 square miles, 27.4 billion dollars. And we are comprised of Menifee, Mirida, Lake Alsono, Kenya, like, why can't this be us? Right? So why do we plan? What is planning? We focus on designing neighborhoods that are safe, healthy, and enjoyable. So as part of the planners, planning commissions, and private sector, and the education sector, we are in intermediaries between multiple professions. We ensure that the public is involved and included in the process, and we promote economic development for social equity and provide, protect, sorry, the environment while maintaining safety and quality. There is different types of planning, so I'm going to pass these. But basically rational planning, top-down, you focus on the mathematics, satisficing, you make the best decision possible. Incremental planning, you take different and small steps to achieve this. Mix scanning, there's different types of planning. So everybody's going to be a different type of planner. And participatory planning, which you try to involve the public, which this was what Jane Jacobs had argued for. Advocacy planning, which was formulated and polluted by Davidoff, that basically said, there's a lot of different communities out there. So we have the disabled community, we have women, we have different social classes, that we need to be inclusive of them. Because before, people thought that planning was just for one public. And we are now learning that there is multiple publics that we need to address and accommodate. Transactive planning, which is mutual learning, communicative planning, which we bring everybody to the table, so developers, elected officials, professional planners, and we all come to a solution together. And so again, there's different types of planning. And the issue of multiple publics is now a lead issue in that we need to create these frameworks and systems that allow everybody to be included in the process, in order to feel included, to be heard. That's what makes successful planning. Does this look appealing to you? Yes? What about this? Yeah, somewhat, some of you, yes, some of them, okay. Some cities choose, are choosing to do this in a larger scale. Some cities are choosing to do development on a smaller scale. Right? So everybody is, everybody's going to have different tastes, different appeals. The main thing we need to take from this is if we do planning, we need to do it right, and we need to focus on quality. So there is hope for American cities. So here we see a picture of Denver, back in the early 20th century. Do you see how it's filled? There's like a lot of buildings, the downtown is alive, it is active. By 1970, the middle picture there you see, is mostly a parking lot. The automobile has taken precedence, and it is no longer active, it is no longer alive. Once the nine-to-five is done, it's empty. But now we see a picture here from 2024, and all of the buildings are starting to return, it's starting to become alive, it's starting to become a livable, walkable downtown center that's alive. And this is what it's looking like today. So the choice is ours as to what we can do. And there's a lot of issues that are going to go on in terms of public design and transportation, which we'll talk, we'll touch up on future presentations. In the meantime, if you have any questions, if you have any, anything that you would like to discuss, staff is here to let us know if there's anything that you need to touch upon, or if there's something that you would like to see in future presentations, any particular issues, such as public health, let us know, and we will address it. But that concludes this presentation, and hopefully that was very, very brief, but hopefully it was very insightful as to the history of all of urban planning.
Thank, thank you Fernando, that's like senior planner stuff. Quite interesting.
Thank you, thank you.
If you have any comments or questions, we could entertain a couple of questions. I don't see the applicant for the next item yet, so he was supposed to be here by 6:40, so I'm not sure if they're stuck on traffic, but.
I got a comment. So I've lived, I've worked in a lot of big cities, and of course, live in the suburbs. And I see the benefit of a lot of these concepts for the revitalization of downtowns. They work very well. My question is, we are mainly a suburb, right, Menifee?
Right.
So I could see some of these concepts being implemented. Obviously, this is pointing towards the zone down off of Ziders.
Innovation?
Innovation District, yeah. So I guess from you and from Orlando, what, if you could wave your wand, what level would you bring that to? Between, there was the ultimate dense city examples in here, and then there was the suburbs completely. What would your wand do in the Innovation District?
Do you want to, I could, I could go first? So what research and design has shown is, and I had mentioned before, there is technically no right or no wrong answer in urban planning. There's only going to be positive results and negative results as the type of implementations that you choose. So in urban planning, what the general consensus is, is developing somewhere between four to eight stories would be ideal because it creates a sense of life, it creates a sense of dynamic use that you need, as well as that support for the commercial uses, that residential component, to keep a lot of these commercial uses alive. So if I were to choose, I would say that, but I would also add to it that I would want to see a mix of densities. So to provide choice for people to, if they want to live in a townhome, they can live in a townhome. If they want to live in a high-rise apartment, they can live in a high-rise apartment. Because it should not be up to me to determine how somebody lives. But it is my job to give them that opportunity, should they choose to live in Menifee. Because we want to bring in those people into Menifee, we want everybody to feel included, to spend their money here to continue to invest in our community. So I would say ideally, predominantly, the most, most of the development, I would say around that range, but also provide a mechanism of providing for that lower density and the potential of that higher intensity.
So that's the housing side though, but you're saying most of the Innovation District should be housing?
No, no, the intensity of the development. So that would also apply to the commercial development. For commercial development, for sure, I don't think it should be one to two stories because as we're seeing in Menifee, we're starting to run out of land. So even, a lot of, it looks like we do have a lot of land, but a lot of that land already has plans or there's ideas for it. So that small amount of land that we have remaining, we need to maximize the utility for it.
I guess, a couple of other comments that I do want to make. I, I think for me, it's not about the type or the intensity, but it's of, what elements are we doing or putting in into a, a plan that is going to make it successful, right? So it's probably going to have a variation of a few things, and the intensity or density is going to be different. But more important than that, are we doing the right landscaping, the trails, the walkability, the amenities that is going to complement the overall concept that we want to accomplish, right? So it, it, it's a combination of different things. So we shouldn't just be stuck of, obviously, we're never going to be one of those big cities because that was not the idea of the presentation, it was just more of, see how cities have evolved. We will never be one of those cities, right? But the point is, how can we position ourselves to make good planning decisions that will put us in a good situations to be able to provide services? Because as you know, if we continue to be a bedroom community, we will not be able to pay the bills, right? So we have to attract a commercial, we have to develop, as we also learned last meeting, the way we develop impacts the way we, you know, collect taxes and how do we get revenue to the city, right? So it's a combination of different things.
Right, and then actually, that also allows me to put in a little plug for the, one of the next presentations, which is going to be about urban design, which Orlando kind of touched up on, and the landscaping, and how these components of planning affect us. They affect us in our mental health, our social health, our physical health, and we don't even know it. So the urban pattern of Menifee is setting us up not for success if we keep this up because it's going to cause detrimental issues for its residents. Another component of this is that if you look at the demographics of Menifee, there's actually a dip in the population of young residents. So what's happening is that a lot of the people that are growing up in Menifee that are going to school here end up leaving, going to universities elsewhere, and they end up staying there and moving to other cities. And what happens? We begin to train all these people, educate all these people, and then we're losing all of those resources, all of the things that we put into them. And all of that is going to other communities. So that's also another important aspect into creating cities that people want to live in, invest in, stay in. There's a lot of benefits, and I don't want to touch up too much on it because I want to save that for the, the public design and that presentation. But yeah, I would, I would definitely second what Orlando has said.
Before we continue with the agenda, probably just one last comment, and I think the applicant's already here, but Brian actually made a good point a few months ago as to how challenging it is for us, a staff, to go and have lunch at Countryside Marketplace, right? Because for us to walk over there, we have to walk to the corner.
Are they dangerous?
And then, and then, you know, walk Han, and then walk across Newport, and then back again Han. So it's, it's almost impossible to walk over there, and we're not that far away, right? So what can we do to make it easy for us to walk over there and have lunch? Because 80% of the staff drives, and it's, it's something that shouldn't happen.
So one other comment is, well, two, my, two comments, I have to disagree with something, and that is that, well, I kind of agree in that if you look at the decline in most of these large cities, whether it's Detroit or these others, Chicago and things, most of those are have to do with the regulatory and social policies of those cities. So I agree with a lot of what you said, but there's a lot left out in this presentation. I think it's important to say that. Having said that, one of the values of Menifee is we have a strong public safety here. I mean, super strong. In fact, when we became a city and the police drove all our streets, people came out of the houses and greeted everybody. So that is a value, I guess I pissed him off or something, I don't know. So having said that, the last comment would be, I see that the parcels between Lowe's and all the way down to Scott Road are kind of stuck. It's in the EDC, but they're, they're kind of stuck. We've been trying to get a Home Depot, a Walmart in there, nothing's really happened. No? I mean, you can, if you have.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in, I mean, I, I think there's, for us, it's what we call our beachfront property, right? So there's, there's been a lot of discussion with developers that are looking at those properties to doing something unique, right? So I think we're starting to see a lot of interest, and we're guiding the interest into creating the right type of development, right? The development that we want to go and spend the entire evening there and just drive there and come back, right? But we want to maybe even walk there and spend, you know, three, four, five hours and then eventually go home, right? So those are the things that we're talking to developers, there's a lot of good interest in. And we've had conversations with multiple people that want to develop there, but it's not the, the type of development that we want to bring forward, right?
Well, my comment was actually, to your point, was perhaps we need to, because we're looking at the Innovation District, right? In a new way, maybe we need to include that part in, maybe it's in a second phase, in a new way. So, and, and I was the most ardent protector of the EDC. You can watch any video you want of a planning commission, and I'm that guy. So, but to me, it's kind of, I'm glad to hear there's developers coming in. But perhaps, and the mayor's here, you know, maybe it's time to look at a little different look to the, to that area.
Commissioner Tom, you're making a great comment, and I think the, the discussions we've been having over the last year, year and a half with Innovation District has actually started other discussions outside the Innovation District as well. So it will happen, I think, organically in terms of people wanting to expand, not necessarily become part of the Innovation District, but doing things that will complement the Innovation District and, and create special, special districts.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you for the presentation Fernando, it was really quite comprehensive. I want to go back to the malls versus the pedestrian malls. For the pedestrian malls that were built and then torn out, what were the reasons why they were torn out? And then a second question is, transportation here in Menifee, like, what are we looking toward the future in terms of having a more connectivity besides the automobile?
Yeah, so a lot of the malls entered into, well, when they were first introduced, the most, the majority of them were extremely successful. So there was like over 300 malls that were created in the United States during this time. Most of them entered into decline because of several factors. Mostly because of what was cited was because of the perception of the lack of parking, which actually was not the case, that was more of a psychological issue. So one of the things that was actually studied is that in most cases, there was sufficient parking. It's just that the perception and access to parking, a lot of residents found to be troublesome. The other issue was that eventually some of these entered into decline because of the lack of investment. In some cases, there would be unhoused individuals that would move into these spaces and occupy these spaces. So lack of police, the perception of safety was an issue in some of these malls. So that lack of investment in these spaces resulted in them entering into decline. So even in some of these spaces though, that had entered into declines, for example, in Riverside, the main street there, actually, the main street pedestrian mall, had been in decline from the 1980s to the 1990s, even as early as the 2000s. As I'm sure some of you remember, if you've been to downtown Riverside during that time, there wasn't much to do. But as part of the Riverside Renaissance, they actually reinvested into that public mall, brought it up, did a lot of treatments, and along with other investment projects, such as the re-establishment of the Fox Theater and such, throughout the downtown helped reinvigorate and bring life to that. And so that helped basically bring life and investment into the urban core. So it actually wound up being a resource, and so long as they reinvested. So basically, the lack of understanding into the implementation of the malls, and then the withdrawal of resources of the malls caused a lot of these to decline.
And then to your second question, you know, here, we're, in terms of transportation, we're looking at enhancing our trails, our corridors, and, you know, looking at landscaping, looking at, I mean, we have with, with the different flood control channels that we have and the different trails, that we have a tremendous opportunity to be able to connect, you know, north, south, east, and west. And I think we have the framework, we just need to improve it. And, and we're not looking at, you know, doing studies as to how to enhance those opportunities that we have to make it easy on people to walk and, you know, provide the landscaping, the shading, and everything that, that's needed, make it safe. So people feel comfortable doing that, right? So, and again, trying to make everything more compact, so you don't have to drive as much. Chair?
I don't, I don't see, we as commissioners appreciate you make, show us part of this process, that we can contribute. But Fernando made a comment about us running out of land. Is, is that an accurate comment? What did you mean? Tell me what you meant.
Well, I can probably explain, there's, there's, there's a lot of property that has been entitled over the years and hasn't been developed. So it does look like we do have a lot of open space, but some of the open space that we have, it's already spoken for, right? So there's two or three specific plans that haven't been developed yet, so there's. So, uh, there's not that much opportunity to do something there, right? We do have a rural, a pretty decent sized rural area that it's rural, that, that could always be redeveloped. But we're, I think what we're saying is the, the opportunities that we have along Han and the two fifty freeway, and it's limited, right? And because outside of that, we don't have a lot of open, uh, unentitled property. That's, that's the extent of the comment.
Thank you, Orlando. So, planning commissioners, any more questions? Ivan? No? Okay, we'll learn, we'll be looking forward to the next presentation. Thank you, Fernando.
When, when will the new version of the Innovation District come out? Be presented?
We're probably, uh, maybe a couple months away.
Okay, so that's, is that, did, does that still have that deadline you wanted? The end of twenty-six, was it? No?
Uh, it'll probably be extended a little bit. You know, we wanna make sure we, um, you know, listen to the comments and, and do what we need to do on our side and make sure that we cover everything that we need to.
Oh, good answer. Okay, we, I guess we're ready to move on? We're gonna move on to agenda approval or modifications. Madam Chair, are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Can I ask Planning Commission for an all in favor to approve the agenda?
Aye.
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 Hearing none, the agenda is approved. That takes us to item six. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
We have none.
Okay. Okay, so, move on to seven. There is one, the approval of minutes. There is one set of minutes for the Planning Commissioners' approval. Does the Planning Commission have any modifications?
No.
Okay, yeah. None? Could I ask Planning Commission for an all in favor to approve the August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I hear none opposed, then minutes are approved. And now we're mov- we're moving on to the consent calendar. There are no consent calendar items. For nine, public hearing items. Before we begin this public hearing, I'd like to briefly explain the procedures. Following the staff presentation and any questions from the commission, I will open the public hearing. The applicant will then have an opportunity to speak, followed by members of the audience who wish to address the commission. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes, three uninterrupted minutes to provide their comments. Please note that the commission will not be able to respond to the comments or questions posed during the public comment portion, but may raise questions or issues with the staff or the applicant after the public hearing is closed. Okay. This takes us to item nine point one, the Menifee Wash Bank Express Car Wash. Uh, this is nine point one. Could the community development director please introduce the item?
Chair Madrid, thank you. I don't think Fernando's tired, so he's gonna continue with the next presentation. And I did, uh, I did ask him to make it a little bit shorter than the other one, so I think we're good.
Appreciate that.
Well, well, well. It is I again. So this is for Wash Bank Express Car Wash, Plot Plan PLN twenty-two dash zero two six one. The project location is off of Han Road, just north of City Hall and Newport Road. The project proposes the establishment of a mixed-use two-story building, which is gonna consist of a four thousand seven hundred eighty-nine square foot car wash and a four thousand one hundred sixty-four square foot office space on top of the car wash. The general plan designation for the property is specific plan, and the zoning designation for the property is a specific plan, and most specifically Newport Hub specific plan. The site plan laid out here is gonna have one point of access from Han Road. Twenty-five auto spaces were required for the use, but the applicant and team is gonna provide three, thirty-three spaces, two of which will be ADA and two of which will be EV charging spaces. The landscaping plan shown here is in compliance with all of the landscaping requirements for the zoning code and specific plan. We have here the architecture of the building and what it's going to look like. So the side facing Han Road and the side that's gonna face Interstate two fifteen. Public notices were published in the press enterprise on August eleventh for today's meeting, and all relevant public agencies, including interesting parties, were noticed within a five hundred foot radius, and that's only because to increase the requirement of the twenty-five unique property owners. On-site posting was also provided. It was determined that the project is gonna be Class thirty-two exempt, uh, the infill exception, per SEQA. And it is staff's recommendation that the, the Planning Commission determined that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section one five three three two, infill development, and direct staff to file an notice of exemption and adopt a resolution approving Plot Plan PLN twenty-two dash zero two six one. This concludes staff's presentation.
Wow, you did short. But you got everything in there. Thank you, Fernando. Does, uh, Planning Commission have any questions for staff? No, no discussion, just questions? Okay. Tammy?
How many office spaces will be made available for this project?
Four office spaces.
And, um, with regard to the circulation, can you explain the circulation, please?
Yeah, if, if we could, oh, actually, I can, let me take us to that side. So access is gonna be provided by Han Road. Here we see that on the parking lot, that's to the south, that's gonna be a point of two-way access. The rest of the circulation onsite is gonna be one-way. So they'll enter off of Han Road and then turn right and go up. So they can either turn to park in the office parking spaces, or they could go up to the car wash. Once they've completed going through the car wash, they'll exit towards that pointed end, and then go through the vacuum stalls. And so once they're done vacuuming, they would exit right off of Han.
Thank you.
How many square feet is each of those individual offices?
The total square footage of the office spaces is-
Individually, how, how individually?
Let's see. It's gonna be a-
They're roughly a thousand, a thousand square feet.
A thousand.
I think, if I remember from the presentation we did on this, the workshop, isn't the car wash gonna be using one or two of those offices, or no?
There is an office located down below for the car wash itself, so the four offices would be for other users.
Michael? You're good for now? Okay, see, being there's no more questions, no further questions from the Planning Commission? I'll open up the public hearing at seven twelve PM. Madam Clerk, can you confirm that the item was legally noticed, and if any correspondence has been received?
It was, and no correspondence was received.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to the podium to speak.
Oh, yeah, right.
Welcome. Please, uh, please state your name.
Hello, uh, this is Dan from J-Ball Architects. I'm, uh, here behalf of my principal. Unfortunately, my principal wasn't able to make it, 'cause he has a funeral, so please do understand. And also, our client's supposed to be here, but I can't get hold of him right now, so please do understand that I'm here.
Can you answer for him that you accept the conditions of approval?
Yes, I accept, uh, I have authorization.
All right, thank you. So tell us about your project.
Okay. So this is a car wash, uh, project. On the ground floor, it'll be office for the car wash, and the upper floor, it'll be four, uh, office, uh, rooms, I guess, office, four offices on the second floor. And you can, uh, we are anticipating two hundred cars going through the car wash every day. And we have, uh, about thirty-three parking lots and, uh, twenty-seven vacuum machine for the car wash.
Great.
Okay.
I got a question for him.
Okay, Chris?
Someone else, or do you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah.
So I, I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure, I'll, I'll ask, and if you can answer them, great. Could you go back to the slide with elevations? So when I was, when I was looking at this originally, the west elevation, uh, that we see in the slide on the left, it, I found that, I, I would be, uh, see, how do I wanna put this? There, there's not a lot of architectural detailing on that elevation. When I, when I saw it, uh, it, it looked to me, honestly, like a, a little bit like a Motel Six. And I'm, I'm just curious, is there a reason why? Looks like you just didn't complete the detailing on that west elevation. Is there, can you speak to that at all? Or is that a client decision, or? Trying to throw you a lifeline.
I'll try my best to explain. So originally, the client wanted to just have their car wash, but City of Menifee, uh, introduced to have offices. So that's why we have a second building on, uh, upper floor. And according to, uh, working together with the city, they wanted some corridor on the, uh, second floor at the, facing the parking lot. So we made some rhythm to that, um, walkway, and we followed that, uh, opening down to the ground floor. So that's what we did on the, that facade.
I would, I would like to see a little bit more detailing there. I do realize, however, that this sits back at the, at the, you know, eastern end of the lot, so it doesn't front directly on the street. I'd have more comments if it fronted directly on the street, but, but I certainly would like to see some increased detailing there. The use is a little bit unusual, the combination with office and, and the drive-through tunnel underneath for the car wash. Did you guys, uh, consider in your plans isolation from noise and vibration? If you're from the car wash, if you're in the offices above?
Uh, I heard there's a, a study for the noise, but I'm not aware of the result, to be honest.
And any, anything to isolate vibrations from the equipment running in the tunnel?
I'm pretty sure they'll be considered during the structure coordination, which, that hasn't been there yet.
And I, I see that you've got covered parking spaces where, uh, folks would go to dry their cars. I don't see that there's photovoltaic panels on the top of that. It looks, to me, it's like a missed opportunity to maybe take advantage of the fact that you're covering those and to cover them with PVs. Can you speak to that at all?
To be honest, I think that's a great opportunity, and I agree to it. Uh, I think we have brought the issue to, uh, our client, and our client didn't really buy that option, so I think I'll leave it up to our client if I can have-
I understand. My intent was not to put you in an awkward situation. I just, those are the questions that I have. At some point, Mr. Chair, I'd like to return and ask staff a couple of questions, but I'll wait for my colleagues to ask theirs.
But we'll speak to staff after. Yeah, okay. Chris?
Yeah, kind of following his question. Can you go back to the elevation? Are the windows facing the east, is that like open air with like a hallway going to? Is it considered like an open-air hallway? Or is that all wind-solared windows, and when you walk in, you're going down a hallway to the offices?
On the second floor, it's open.
You know, the, the client did himself, or applicant did himself a disservice, because it's not fair to you to answer questions that you are awkward answering. I mean, you're fine, but, I mean, I have, I have a question I'll ask, because, I won't ask, because he's not here.
Uh, I'm sorry this happened, but-
No, no, it's, yeah, it's, he, he shouldn't, he, I mean, I, I don't, I, how, have you, have you designed many of these for this client?
Myself, no, but my principal, I believe he did.
Yeah, see, that's, that's like the question. Is this, this doesn't look like a good location, but that's none of my business. But it doesn't look like a good location for this, this kind of a car wash. But, um, I just wanted to ask you, so. Michael? Still thinking? Tammy?
You know, you all have been asking questions that I've also been wondering about, so I really appreciate you, um, asking the questions. My, all, my, another concern that I have is the circulation, because where the parking lot is, it's a, it's two-way, and I'm afraid that people might want to exit where the car wash line is at. That's one of my concerns. Um, I'm not sure if anybody else has that concern.
And this is a twenty-three vacuums? And, and Tommy's is twelve. The similar product down the street, so.
Can I get the papers, uh, just to clarify?
Sure. So just to give you a comparison between what, that's the one that's across the street from the full car, full-serve car wash? So he's at twenty-three.
So just to give you a history on this-
And no street traffic.
The history on this, we had a workshop, were you guys here? Any of you here during that workshop? So, wasn't thrilled about being this in it, but it, it is an allowed use in the specific plan. That's why it's slipping in, so.
Commissioner Tom, if, if I can add to that, um, for the benefit of the commission, the, the site is located in a specific plan. Typically, uh, car washes outside of a specific plan in, in general commercial or business park usually require a conditional use permit, which allows the commission a little more discretion. The specific plan allows car washes by right. So, um, obviously, they, what's before you, it's a plot plan application, because obviously the, the site is vacant, and what you're reviewing is the architecture. So your comments to the architecture are, are, uh, are adequate and, and, and valid. So, uh, in regards to the use, staff had initially the same concerns. Obviously, this is a lot that is adjacent to the freeway, it's highly visible. So the initial sumito, uh, the architecture was not to the standard of what we normally bring to the commission, and we were having difficulties working with the applicant. So we did advise the applicant to do a workshop with the commission, which, which we did, and the commission directed the, the applicant to obviously work with us, because the initial proposal was not up to par. So, uh, what you see today is a significant improvement to what was originally provided. And I think, to your comment, Commissioner Haller, I think we did hit the mark along the freeway, because the intent was to make it look like an office building, and you see all the glazing, and, and I, and I think that was the original intent, and, and I think that's what we wanted to accomplish. On the backside, to your comment, um, the, maybe the architectural, uh, it's not at the same level. And we did work with them to improve it as well, but it's, since it's not highly visible from the freeway, we did not require the same, uh, level of architecture as we did on the freeway side.
So, and, and I appreciate that. I didn't have a concern with the, uh, the eastern elevation that, that fronts along Interstate two fifteen. My concern was with the western elevation. So, I mean, and, and you've heard me articulate them, right? So I don't, I don't recall the findings that have to be made on this with respect to, you know, how it fits in as a part of the community, given that it's, there's not a use permit with it. I don't have those in front of me right now. But I, I mean, I do have those concerns. The PVs seem just like a missed opportunity. The noise and vibration in the building, it's a unusual combination of, you don't normally see office space on top of the tunnel. So I, again, I, I don't know what transpired earlier in the workshop, and maybe you can help me understand, uh, maybe you can just help me understand the findings with respect to the issues that I brought up.
You, you are raising valid comments. You are raising valid comments. We did, we did verify with Building and Safety, and there are certain things that can be done, obviously, to making sure that the noise does not affect the second story. So from a structural standpoint, also from an insulation standpoint, so there's different things. Also, the car wash equipment now, it's significantly different than it was, you know, 10, 15 years ago. So obviously, they're comfortable that we're not going to have any impact in terms of making sure that the offices will be utilized, and they're not going to be a noise issue.
I guess I find myself in just a little bit of a difficult situation, because I don't, I don't know some of the answers to the questions that I have asked, and I'm not, again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, so I, I just, in some cases, don't know.
Well, we'll come back to you, and we're not talking to staff right now, right? So we'll come back. You ready, Michael?
Yeah.
You're the architect, right?
I'm designer.
He's the designer. I don't know if it's on, no, it's not up there. Piggyback off of Ivan's, what is that, western elevation? The five openings. Have you considered enclosing those in glass so that they're not open?
All of them?
Yeah, all of them. So that it, so that it almost mirrors the elevation on the 215 side.
Since it's a part of equipment room, we need some kind of enclosure on the ground floor.
So, I'm talking the second level.
Oh, second level. And we, for the second level, we just bring in the rhythm of the ground floor to the second level to have there some uniformity as a whole building. That's our, my understanding for the design. But in terms of having all glazing, we haven't thought about it, I think.
If I can, if I can intercept. So that was an issue that was brought up to the applicant's team during the meeting that we had with the Planning Commission. The applicant's team did mention that if we did provide glass coverage in those openings, there would be issues in terms of ventilation and the heat, especially during summer, because it would essentially turn it into a greenhouse effect, so that hallway would be unbearably hot. So that's why it was left open.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions for the applicant commissioners? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for understanding.
Oh, yeah, good job. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak, or would anyone in the audience like to make a comment?
We do not.
Wow, okay. Okay, then I will close the public hearing at 7:27 PM. Okay, planning commissioners, any questions or comments for staff?
So I did just go through finding one, CD 3-14, and as I read through it, that, that section references, "Providing variations in color, texture, materials, articulation, architectural treatments, avoiding long expanses of blank, monotonous walls or fences." It's a little difficult, but I can perhaps see how to get from here to there. Not, I don't think the ideal for that, but I, I think maybe I can see how to get through this finding.
Commissioner Haller, one, one option could be that if it's the commission's desire, and we have consensus, that part of your motion, if you support the project, is to ask the applicant to continue to work with staff to improve the west elevation more in line with some of the comments that you can provide today.
I actually would like to that. I don't know if my colleagues would be inclined, but I would actually like to do that. And at an appropriate time, I'd be happy to introduce a motion to do that.
Well, just to, I mean, obviously, it's going to bring additional costs, but I will give a little history on this. Next door is the car repair company. They wanted to put open bays all along the west side and facing the freeway, and we wouldn't let them. They had to move their bays around, and we had them put trees. So we held them up to a higher standard of aesthetics and elevations and things as well. I guess I don't see why we wouldn't hold this one up to the same level. And they had to make significant redesign on their, on their, how the movement goes inside the car repair building, because we did that. So as far as the greenhouse effect, you have other buildings around with glass as well. He just is going to have to air-condition it, that's what it boils down to. So if he doesn't want, I can understand, if he doesn't want to have the expanse of glazing and closing it, maybe there's some other material he can put on it or something, I don't know.
Well, I, if, you want me to go ahead, or?
Go ahead.
Okay.
You got momentum.
Here's what I'd like to ask, and Madam City Attorney, I just make sure you keep me, you know, out of the wrong places here. I would like to move that, to direct staff to work a little further with the applicant, to see if we can better articulate the, especially the west elevation, and, and at least consider PVs on top of the, on top of the canopy. And I'll, and I'll leave it at that. It's not, at least my intent in making this to, you know, have the applicant spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's not it at all. I just like it to look a little bit better and, and more fitting with this area of the use, I understand. I'm not taking issue with the, with the use at all, but, so that would be my motion? If that...
Yeah, so you, you can make a motion to continue this item, say, in two meetings, in order for staff to further, you know, consider this item.
Before we do that, I have a question.
Yes.
So let me, let me just put a timeline.
Yeah, are we doing approval with work with staff, or are we doing continuance with work with staff?
Well, that's up to you. Are you looking to approve this? Is your motion to approve this item with further?
No, my motion would be to continue the item. Is, is two meetings enough time? Okay, then, then that would be my motion.
Before you make a motion, I have a question. So Orlando, did they do, we had the workshop, and they did revisions with you? And they brought them to this point? Are you, and you recommended for approval, you've already been through. So we're giving, we're also, anyway, I just want you to take that into consideration and...
There's, there's opportunities to improve the west elevation. Obviously, there was pushback from the applicant, but we can have those discussions and come back if that's the commission's preference.
So that would be consistent with what we promised them?
Sorry, just want to clarify, there are no promises from staff regarding this item. The applicant does submit an application for staff's review and comments. And of course, like all developers, the city staff works with the applicant to create the best product possible to bring forth before this commission. And it is, of course, your jurisdiction and authority to approve or deny a project based on necessary legal findings.
Strike that word, promise to agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add one thing to Ivan's motion? Since we're gonna, since you guys are gonna look at the design, maybe you can consider adding another color in there, as it does with the white. I know you got color on the glaze, on the glaze work, but that dark gray and the white, I think it would, I know this is just opinion of mine, but it might pop a little bit more with another shade of something in there. I like the 215 side. I like how it kind of flows in with our other medical buildings, you know, block away. But I think it just needs something. And I don't know, I mean, I'm looking at a drawing right here. It's, I know it's not official, but maybe an additional color added to that, the existing drawing.
Okay.
May I add something?
Oh, yes, of course.
For the, the parking lot without the vacuums, if we could continue the arrows, so that way people know that... Because I'm just afraid someone's going to try to come out the other way. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll make sure there's adequate signage and...
Oh, and one more question. Did staff propose or have that discussion with the applicant about solar panels on top of, and, no?
No, not to my knowledge, I don't think we have, we had those discussions, no. It's also not a code requirement. It is obviously a good location to provide them, and if they choose to go that route, yeah.
So may I suggest that for the motion, that it be a motion to continue this item until the September 24th Planning Commission meeting in order for staff to discuss three topics, including the color of the building, the siding, right? The west elevation, as well as adequate signage for safety, for additional safety purposes.
And the solar.
As well as solar panels. Staff will discuss those items and bring back the, whatever amended or updated staff report for that September 24th meeting.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
So do we have a first?
First.
We're going to vote. We take the...
I got a different screen up here.
We're going to do, there, there we go.
I believe you can do the electronic first and second, correct? Thank you.
I was actually reading the findings.
Okay. Okay, we got... Everybody vote? Okay, so that's done. So thank you very much, we'll see you next time. Okay, so item 10, discussion items, there are no discussion items. 11, Community Development Director comments. Community Development Director, do you have any updates or comments?
No comments today, thank you.
Thank you, Orlando.
Orlando, I got, I received communication this morning from a resident. It's been almost a year since anything has been mentioned about ambient, ambient communities. Is anything progressed with them? The golf course property.
You know, we haven't had any discussions with the property owner. So they haven't reached out to us, so they're probably still trying to figure out how they want to move forward.
Yeah, the last meetings they had with the community were in November of last year.
Yeah, no updates, yeah. Yeah, no, no updates at the moment.
Who's mowing the lawn, or the weeds and weeding and doing that?
They are, apparently.
The buyer.
The buyer, okay.
Unless they're getting citations, so hopefully they aren't. Okay, number 12, Commissioner reports on committee activities, Michael.
I only got one. On the 18th, I attended the Veterans and Military Families Advisory Committee, and that was pretty interesting, so that's all I got.
Okay, number 13, Future Agenda Requests from Planning Commissioners. Would the Planning Commission like to request any future agenda items? Okay, number 14, I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:38 PM. Wow.